Good afternoon. Welcome to a special workshop meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. It is August 18th, is that right? No, August 20th. Well, I'll be darned. It's the 23rd, but our minutes say it's July 26th. Isn't that interesting? It's August 23rd. Sorry about that. 2017. I do know what year it is. Anyway, to those viewing, we welcome you and I'd like to go around the table and ask everybody to introduce themselves. I am Oak Harbor Mayor Bob Severance.
Kim Campbell, City Council.
Tara Eisen, City Council.
Rick Holmberg, City Council.
Doug Merriman, City Administrator.
Nikki Asparz, City Attorney.
Emma House, Human Resources Director.
Dr. Victoria McGrath from McGrath Human Resources Group.
Melina Halverson-Maze, McGrath Human Resources Group.
Joel Strabadia, City Council.
Erica Wassinger, City Council.
We have one city council person that is absent and that's Mayor Pro Tem Danny Pagau. Won't be with us today, but we are expecting City Councilperson Beth Munn's any minute. So I would like to start the meeting though at this time and I see that we have an item on our consent agenda regarding the award of contract for FDOC Breakwater Repair Project. And if there's no questions about that, we'll move on to our action item. We have with us, they've introduced themselves already, two representatives from McGrath Resources Group. And the item before us is a Resolution 1715 regarding approval of market rate salary schedule for non-represented employee classifications. And I don't know for sure who to turn it to, but I think I'll start with our HR Director, Emma House.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Council. Thank you for having us here today. Today, we are here to present to you the Classification and Compensation Study of 2017 for our non-represented employees and to ultimately let you know about the proposed market rate salary schedule, which would be referred to as our classification plan that has been proposed as a result of the study. To give you a little bit of background, we put out requests for proposals in August of 2016. We awarded the contract in December of 2016 and we finished the study in June. And now we are here to present to you at the council meeting here in August. According to our Oak Harbor Municipal Code 2.34.080 compensation, it is the policy of the City of Oak Harbor to pay adequate levels of compensation to city employees. Our compensation levels should reflect the market for such personnel in the region. And along with our municipal code, there's also a reference in 2.34.085 in reference to our health insurance benefits. And to provide health insurance benefits to our employees at a level which is comparable to benefits provided by other local municipal government entities in the state of Washington. And then to tie our code together, we have our Employee Policy Manual. And in our Employee Policy Manual under Salary Administration, our classification plan is designed to pay salaries that are internally equitable. To pay salaries that reflect the market for each classification at comparable municipal governments in Washington State. Within budget limitations and with full consideration of the public's interest. So there's multiple references within our code and within our policy manual which have given us the direction for the study. And then just to give you an idea of what the goals were of the study for our non-represented employees, we wanted to look at internal equity for long-term retention. We wanted to make sure that we align our positions and our salaries with the market and our comparables to make sure that we stay up to date. We wanted to make sure that our classification plan is easy to understand, placements by all city personnel. And we wanted to make sure that it's fiscally responsible for city council with equitable salary adjustments. And lastly, it's important for us to make sure that we are saying externally competitive for recruitment with the market and our comparables. So those were the main goals that we wanted to focus on. And to give you an idea of our compensation philosophy, our current philosophy is to reflect the market salary range. So the range goes from the minimum to the maximum. And to ensure that our compensation placement for our positions is between a 40 to 60 percentile. So in our world for the City of Oak Harbor, our comp ratio between 40 to 60% of the market average is considered appropriate for placement of our positions on our salary schedule. And next, I would like to introduce to you our consultants who completed the study for us, McGrath Human Resources Group. We have Dr. Victoria McGrath here and we also have Melina Halverson. So I would like to introduce them now and welcome them to present to you next.
Great. Thank you very much and we appreciate being here today. We have a short presentation which Melina will be doing. I'd like to introduce ourselves. I am Dr. Victoria McGrath. I am CEO of McGrath Human Resources Group. Our firm specializes in public sector compensation studies. We've been in business for 17 years, so this is not the first compensation study that we have done. We work primarily with municipal governments from the county level on down, all the way down to towns and small municipalities. So therefore, we are very familiar with the size of organization. Currently, we work in about 30 different states. You are not the first Washington municipality. We have done a couple of other municipalities within Washington. We also have a second side to our business. McGrath Consulting Group is the parent company. That's a side of the business specializes in public safety consulting. So we do police and police, fire and EMS consulting and dabble a little bit in some public works consulting. So therefore, even though we didn't do a lot when it came to police and fire and EMS because those were union, we did do the non-union positions with those. We are very familiar with that side as well. So therefore, when it comes to compensation studies, we have done anything from as small as about 10 employees to about 1,600 employees is about the top of our range. So our designs of our systems are very unique, which means that we do not come in with a set compensation schedule that we shoehorn you into. In fact, what we do is we try to sit down and we spent a lot of time meeting with your administration, meeting with your department heads, and then trying to figure out what is the outcome, what is the goal that you're trying to achieve and then design a compensation system that meets those needs. So I'm going to turn it over to Melina who will introduce herself and she'll tell you what we did and what our recommendations are.
Excellent. Good afternoon. I have to just say that this is my maiden voyage with YouTube. So my daughter will be either really, really impressed or she's going to be really, really horrified that I'm on YouTube today. So anyway, what's that?
I forgot we're online.
I am Melina Halverson-Maze and I am one of the senior consultants with McGrath Human Resources Group. A little bit about me with my background because it might just circle back here in the conversation that we have today. I have been with McGrath for going on three years as a consultant in the public sector. But prior to that, I sat at the table right where Emma is today and I was in human resources at a county level in the state of Wisconsin for approximately 15 years. And so, public sector is absolutely dear and dear to my heart. When I left the public sector, I went to the private sector and I was in human resources. And we spent, my focus within human resources was with a relatively small company. And I hired either skilled or unskilled labor or engineers. And it was one way or the other. And so I got a real good, unique perspective on life in the private sector and really some of the challenges that we have. So I suspect that that will circle back in our conversation today. So I would also like to just briefly, before we get started, say that this particular project was not something that was done in a vacuum. There were a number of people that participated in this particular project. And it started with the employees. And all of the employees or positions, all of the positions, and so there were a number of employees ended up filling out documents that then we evaluated. And with that then, those documents were reviewed by your department heads. And we had meetings with those department heads as well, a number of times through the course of this project. And we also met with your administration and with your mayor. And so I want everyone to at least have that global understanding that there were a lot of people that were involved with this particular project. I want to give special thanks to the mayor for his assistance, also to Doug and especially to Emma. Emma is, she is an absolute wonderful person to work with and I think that she serves the constituents of the city and she serves the employees and the council very well in her role. So thank you, Emma, for your assistance with this project. Okay, let's get started. Why are we here? What was the purpose for the study? When we got on board, we understood the project to be that the city was striving to competitively recruit and retain their employees and to motivate those employees to excel in their job performance. And then that will also result in ensuring that the services to the constituents are best served. But one of the challenges that the city has had is that there has not been a compensation system done on the non-represented employees for nearly 12 years. And that is a challenge that will come back up again during this presentation. That 12 years, in 12 years' time, a lot of things can happen to the market. A lot of things can happen to positions. And that might mean then that your salaries fall out of what we would consider a competitive range. What were our objectives? And Emma talked about this briefly in her introduction. What our objectives were to provide a fair competitive wage in the labor market and to attract and retain professional productive and diverse workforce. And in order to do that, we need to make sure that we have competitive salaries. Provide an internal, oh, I'm sorry. Can you hear me now? Okay. Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Okay. To provide internal consistency within and between departments. To provide a recommendation for compensation administration and to include rules and policies, maintain long-term competitiveness to ensure equity and position the city for future development. One of the things that we've done is we've given Emma some tools in her toolbox to be able to maintain this product now that she has it, provided that the council adopts it, so that it can continue to be this tool for her and it can be maintained more often than once every 12 years. To recommend base salary ranges and a classification placement within those ranges. And we'll talk a little bit more about that as I go forward. And to provide a job evaluation methodology that makes logical comparisons between jobs. And we also have that for Emma so that when we need to do position comparisons in the future or position placements in the future, that she'll have those tools, that she'll be able to do that for herself. We identified some concerns when we got here after we took a look at the schedule and the policies of the city and after having conversations with your department directors. The first one is that it has been 12 years since you've done your last compensation study. We recommend that those systems themselves are evaluated at least every three to five years with the market to make sure that the salaries themselves are remaining within that marketable range. If you wait longer, then what tends to happen is that the organization has to catch up and then they end up, there's somewhat of a cost associated with that in case you have a number of positions that have fallen behind within the market. Other concerns. You are far enough away from the urban setting that sometimes when you're looking to bring people to your jobs, commuting isn't necessarily possible, depending on where they're coming from. And so a lot of times, these employees are looking at relocation. And that can be challenging because they might have family members coming with them and that those family members need to be able to find suitable work in the same area. And so, the island is a wonderful resource. It's got beautiful natural resources that could be a good draw for individuals. But it may not necessarily draw everyone in. And that can become troublesome when you are trying to recruit. In addition to that, a lot of your non-represented positions, they require degrees or specific experience that you may not necessarily have in your local marketplace. And that means that you're going to be expanding out, looking a little bit further for them. For example, you have an archaeologist on staff and there are not a lot of archaeologists likely in the area. And so, because of those very specific skill sets, it becomes a little bit more challenging to bring those specific skills to the area. When we met with employees on a couple of our visits, there were a couple of themes that came through loud and clear and they were recurring, they were recurring themes. The first one is that there is a perception, and I understand perception may not be reality, but it is those employees' reality. There is a perception that the non-represented employees receive less than what the unions receive and that the unions get first and then what's left over may or may not get to the non-represented. Again, perception, but that is what your employees feel. The second concern, and that one again was articulated routinely, is that they are afraid that this study will occur, there will be a recommendation and nothing will happen. And the study will sit on the shelf and then status quo will continue. It's a real concern. Okay, other concerns that we have. With your current system, your market rate is not identified. And we'll talk about what market means here in a bit. Right now, what we understand, or what I understand, is that your maximum rate is market. But that's because it hasn't been necessarily officially defined anywhere else. So the challenge with that is that employees don't know how long they can reasonably expect to get to market. And that is normally something that's identified on a schedule. And in our recommendation, we will have an identified market area. Also with your system, your minimum salaries are low. And we'll talk about this in much more detail further on in the presentation. But nearly 59% of your starting salaries are in an area that we've indicated- But nearly 59% of your starting salaries are in an area that, um, we, we've indicated they need to get boosted up. Your maximum salaries are also low. And we'll, again, we'll talk about this in a little bit more detail. Um, but you have, um, 17% of your positions can actually earn more money at Oak Harbor than they can in your comparable area, only 17%. That means the majority of your positions at maximum rate here at Oak Harbor will always be able to go earn more elsewhere. And the challenge that you have is that you have the majority of your employees, or not majority, over half of your employees are sitting at the maximum pay rates right now. They cannot earn any more off of the schedule that you currently have, except if you give like a cost of living increase. You have union and non-union systems. Those non-union and union systems are developed separately. What happens is when there's negotiations, then there is a focus on, um, that particular union. And, um, you, you make a, you know, you bargain in good faith with that particular package. You put it in front of the council, you approve it and you move on and then you do that with, with the next unit. And there's not oftentimes a comparison of what's going on and how that union, how those union positions impact other people outside of that union. So what happens is, is that you have maybe union employees who are making as much or more than their managers because you're looking at them in silos. And, um, that, that is of no one's fault. That's very common to see in organizations that have union and non-union, um, uh, bargaining units. But it is, um, it is something that we identified here. And as I said before, the majority of your individuals, um, have maxed out in the system. They have no other opportunity for growth. And when I look at your market rates, um, and I, and we see what's going on out in, in, uh, within the market, then you're, we're challenged because there's no more room for the employees to grow here. Okay, so a little bit of terminology as we, as we progress a little bit further. What is a classification system? Um, we often talk about a salary schedule, a classification, sometimes those are going to be interchangeable. Um, a class of a classification system is a schedule of job titles and it reflects the hierarchy of the organization. This is not intended to be demeaning or demoralizing for any positions at all. But there ends up being a natural progression of, you know, certain positions have value and then that grows until your highest valued and, you know, positions are paid the most. And so it's just a, a natural hierarchy that gets developed. It may or may not outline a career path. And so you might have an individual who, and we'll, we'll start with patrol officers. They, they become a patrol officer, perhaps they become a sergeant, perhaps they'll become a management and they ultimately someday want to become a, a police chief. You might find that within, um, the non-representeds, you might also have those opportunities for a career path as an individual grows and develops within the organization, um, then they have other opportunities, um, afforded to them within the organization. What it is not, is it is not a reward system for individual behavior and performance. Um, that is something that's a totally different topic that, um, we're not likely going to, to cover today. It's purely on, on compensation, on the value of a position. Did you have something?
Just want to also focus on that when you look at a classification system, we're focusing on the position. We're not focusing on people. So, we're always looking at the position. And so every now and then we'll get this, "Well, I have a bachelor's degree," or "I have a certification." And that may be wonderful, but then we're always going to go back to say, "Well, if, if Suzie were to leave tomorrow and Suzie has that bachelor's degree, are we going to be looking to, is that position going to require that bachelor's degree?" And if the position isn't going to require the bachelor's degree, it's only we're going to require an associate's degree. We're going to pay grade that position based upon an associate's degree, not the bachelor's degree. It's nice that Suzie has that bachelor's degree, but that's not what the position requires. And so sometimes people are going to look at their placement in the system and go, "Well, wait a second, I'm placed too low because I have this." Well, that's nice that you have this and it's great that you have this, but that's not what the position requires. So, we're always going back to what does the position require, not what does the person have. So, everything is placed based upon what the position. We're always asking the supervisor when we met with them, "All right, if that person were to leave tomorrow, what does the position require, not what does the person have?"
No, that's, just what she said. Okay, what is market? Um, you will hear us talk about market and we use that terminology in a number of different ways. The first one is the labor market. The labor market is the location where we draw the individuals, um, to become your, your employees. Um, that can be determined by geographics. It could be, uh, by comparable services, population, um, industry, demographics, you name it. And it can, it can vary. It will change. Your labor market will always change because times change, industry change, technology changes. Uh, and so what your comparables are now may not be what your comps were five years ago and probably won't be what your comps are five years from now. So, when we are, when we talk at the end of, of, um, the presentation about maintaining the schedule into the future, that should be a consideration that at some point when the city goes back out and tips their toe in the water to make sure that their market is, is adequate and where it's at, um, likely you want to take a look at where are you guys looking at comps? The other market that we talk about is the market rate. The market rate is your estimated wage for a given position within that labor market. Emma was talking about a 40 to 60% range and we're going to start talking about that. Um, but the market rate is really what we set as, as, I would say like that 50%, that middle of the road rate. And then there's a range that goes around it, which is the next one, the market range. It is that salary amount of, you know, lower or a little bit higher that says, "Within this range, you are at an acceptable market, um, for, for position." Okay, so what do you have in your current system? For your non-represented schedule, uh, you have 63 pay grades. Although you only use 26, so you have a lot of open pay grades. Each pay grade has eight steps. And unofficially, your market is at the maximum step at this point. Employees advance at 16 months, 18 months, 30 months. So, they're, they, um, their increases are, they're annually, but they get a six-month increase and then it's, it's annual thereafter. We're also going to talk very, um, very generally today about, uh, an on-call firefighter schedule, although, um, it is part of our overall recommendations. It is, uh, it is not on the resolution for approval tonight because I understand the city is still taking some time to consider that particular schedule. Uh, but the paid on-call firefighter schedule has eight single rates of pay based upon the qualification of that individual coming in, what kind of certifications they have. There's an opportunity for, um, two additional wage increases. And then that's it unless they attain additional certifications that get to put them into a different level of position. So, that's what you have right now for your non-reps. And this is what we're recommending. We are recommending a 10-step schedule. Um, that provides for a standardized progression of pay rates within that pay range on a defined date. Um, to get from step one to step two, as you'll see, is a 3% increase. To get to steps three and four, we're taking a jump and that's a 5% increase. And we'll, I'll circle back and talk about that at us in a minute. Step four then is what we're considering market. Thereafter, your wage, your step increases, um, slowly decrease from 3% down to 2.5% until you get to step 10. We put the heavier steps, the larger steps at steps, uh, at the beginning of, of the schedule because there is a need to get the employees, um, to market. Right now, you have a, a number of employees that are not at market. And so that gives you a, an opportunity over the course of the next couple of years to get, to get them to that marketable, marketable rate. But it also then allows for your new hires. They know coming in that they will be what would be considered market within three years from date of hire. And within three years, they should be able to do their job very effectively. They should, they should know how to do their job. They're not, they should not be on a learning curve after three years. And so when you think about wanting to compensate your people, um, for the job that they're doing, they should be able to successfully do their job. Yes, sir? Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes. And we also do have a recommended on-call firefighter schedule. Again, it's not for consideration tonight. Um, but it, we, uh, we do provide for one rank, uh, one rate per rank with some extra steps, um, per rank. Uh, and again, that is under consideration at this time and I don't know if you want to...
No, actually, we, what we did was we tried to give a little bit more of an incentive for longevity, promotional tenure. But again, I think fire chief and Emma are looking at possibly changing that. So, that's all we're going to go at this point.
All right, so why have this new compensation system? What are the benefits? What are, what, what will be the outcome? Number one is that your salary ranges are now going to be aligned with the market. And that is one of the objectives. We want to make sure that for recruitment and more importantly, retention purposes, we don't want to lose the staff that you have put a lot of time and training into. We want them to stay here because you have a competitive salary. We, uh, have provided procedures for maintaining and managing the system. Um, and that has been provided, uh, to Emma. We'll talk about what some of those are going to be, um, you know, for the council's consideration, um, each year. The positions have been analyzed for internal comparability as well. And we place them on the schedule accordingly. We'll talk about our methodology about that here in a little bit. Uh, because as Dr. McGrath talked about, you know, that's going to be one of the things that you hear from employees of, "How is it that I got placed on the schedule the way that I did?" And we'll, we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail here in a minute. We've addressed your compression. Um, as I talked about, we have union and non-union. Even though they're on different wage schedules, when you take a look at them, you know, if you cross them over, you'll see that you've got some union people that are making, you know, significantly the same amount of money as, um, some of the individuals that are actually supervising them. And what happens when that, when, when compression occurs, people don't want to take those promotional opportunities because, "Well, I'm not going to get any more for supervising, so why should I?" Um, those compression issues were in, uh, mostly in the public works department and in the police department. And so, the schedule considers that, some difference between those types of positions, um, to help alleviate that. And now market is at step four, as I said. So, everyone knows when they're brought in from at hire, the reasonable amount of time that it's going to take for them to be paid market. Okay, common question is the methodology that we use. First, we had the interviews with the mayor, with administration, with department directors. Um, we also invited meetings with any employees that wanted to come see us, uh, when we were onsite. And, uh, we had a number of employees that either asked for a call or face-to-face and we accommodated all of those employees and met with them, talked with them about their position, anything that they wanted to share with us, along with what their perspective is of the comp system, what's, what's, what's good and bad, what's right or wrong in their, in their mind. Um, so good dialogues. Um, all of the employees were, uh, invited to complete a position questionnaire. We required at least one per position so that we could do that analysis of each position so that we could properly place it onto the new schedule. We reviewed data from your current system, your job descriptions and your current policies. How are you doing things now versus best practices? How should you be doing things and what would it look like with a new system? We collected data from 29 organizations. Uh, we collected their minimum, maximum and incumbent salaries. So, we actually asked for what does a foreman in the public works department make for organization XYZ so we could compare it to what our foreman here were making. So, we're doing an actual apples-to-apples comparison. We did that for 53 job titles. And then, uh, once we developed the schedule, we came back onsite. We reviewed those placements with the mayor, with administration and department directors. Um, and, uh, those discussions actually occurred not only with McGrath, but afterwards then Emma went back with the departments and met with them again. The market, as Emma had talked about, comp ratio. Um, comp ratio is the comparison of the city's salaries against what's happening in the market. We put it into a percentage. Um, average is 50%. Um, and that's, um, you know, how that's, how we're, the recommended schedule has been developed. Acceptable range is 40 to 60%. Although, um, when, when you, we, we proceed a little bit closer. The one thing that you really have to be cautious of is those positions that are in the 40 to 44%. They're in that lower acceptable range. Depending upon the speed in which a person can progress through the schedule, 40 to 44% may or may not be okay. Um, and you run the risk that if they have not fallen outside of the market, they, they're likely going to fall behind in quick order. And so we, we look at those, uh, very carefully. So, when we take that comp ratio and we apply it to the minimums here, 28% of your positions had a comp ratio of less than 40%. An additional 31% had a comp ratio between 40 and 44. Those are the ones that are really teetering on the edge. And so that indicated to us the salary schedules, they need some adjusting. When we took a look at what would, what's your actual incumbents, what the actual, you know, market is paying, actual wages, 26% of your positions were less than 40%, a quarter of your positions. 18% were also in that low 40 to 44. And that indicated to us then that the salary schedule needed some more adjusting. Now, when you look at the maximums, maximums, um, as I stated earlier, you only have 17% of your positions that can earn more at Oak Harbor than they can in, you know, the overall average. So, you have 83% of your positions that will not meet, uh, the market maximums elsewhere. And what's more concerning is when I, we were taking a look at the type of positions, the positions on the lower part of your schedule, um, differed than the positions on the upper part of the schedule. And if you were on the upper part of the schedule, you're not likely to hit the market at all. If you were in the lower part of the schedule, you were probably falling into that 17%. And what that means is, is your department heads and your second-in-command positions, your, your management positions are not going to meet market. And that is most concerning because those are the positions that, when you think about, um, you, you think about, you know, your, your future planning, succession planning and, you know, the leader, the leadership of your departments. You have multimillion-dollar departments. And if you lose your number one and possibly your number two, are you prepared for that? And these are the positions that you just don't want to have a lot of turnover in. It can be really impactful to the citizens and impactful to the organization if you have turnover, excessive turnover. And over half of your employees at the current maximums, they don't have any further opportunity because they're at the max and we talked about that earlier. So, therefore, your maximums indicated that we needed to adjust the salary schedule. So, with, oh, yeah, Tara? Tara?
So, more than half of our employees will, unless we adopt this, will never make any more than they're making right now. Is that what you just said?
Correct. Unless you have a cost of living adjustment. If you increase the overall schedule by a couple of percentage points, that's what they'll get. They're at their max. They can't earn any more.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, placement on the schedule. How do we place positions? We use, um, multiple different data points. Um, the first one that we use is what's called a point factor system where we ask those employees to complete a lengthy position questionnaire. It's about 15 pages long and they spent a lot of time giving us that information and we absolutely appreciate it. We read each one of those multiple times as we're analyzing, um, as we're analyzing. We read each one of those multiple times as we're analyzing, as we're analyzing their information. And that allows us then to start placing them based upon their, their roles and responsibilities. Some of the areas that we evaluate those positions are, non-inclusive are listed, education, experience, the complexity in judgment, their equipment that they utilize, their technologies that they utilize, supervision, personal contacts. And we actually evaluate our, all positions on at least 13 different points. And so what happens then is that they're given a, a numerical value, and then that numerical value helps us to place them on the sched, on the scale. We also then consider that external market data that we've collected, the internal comparability, and that is really kind of that hierarchical, what's happening within the department, who reports to who, that type of thing. And? Yes, ma'am.
So, so you actually had 13 points to look at.
Yes.
Their education experience, technology, what machines they use, blah, blah, blah. So, do we actually have some employees that you were to do this to, that they're in the wrong step or the wrong classification because things hadn't been reevaluated or something?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So some people may move up or move down depending on, okay, the 13?
Yes.
Points.
Okay. And that's why, what, if, if the council adopts this program, Emma will have the opportunity then to evaluate positions. If, I call them, I call, sometimes positions will change over time. I call them creepers. You know, what you were doing five years ago is not what you're doing today. And even, all of a sudden, you look at your job and you say, wow, it's significantly changed. Has it changed enough where maybe my salary might change? And so internally, HR will have the opportunity to do an evaluation to see, is it enough where maybe we need to send it to the outside consultant if we're going to do that, or maybe you're going to do it in-house, for a different placement? And so, or if you have a new position and you want to see where that new position's going to be placed on the salary schedule. It's one of, one of multiple different data points that we use, but at least then you have an idea of where that position generally should be falling on the schedule.
So it's a logical, fair?
Correct.
System.
Objective.
And some people have retired at one job, but in the three to five years, it has morphed actually into something else, and they may have received other training, so, okay.
Yes.
One of the problems with your current system is that there really isn't any logical methodology in which to place positions. It just, you know, it just, it, there's kind of place there, and any type of rules and stuff have kind of been lost over time since you really haven't updated that system over 12 years. And so what we've tried to do is say, okay, here's a logical methodology in which to place positions so that you're doing it rather objectively. And the point factor, factor methodology is one way to, to kind of really places things objectively, you know, because people say, well, how do you compare? And I know they're not included in, in this, in this one, but how do you compare a, an equipment operator to a secretary? Well, the point factor does that, you know, and did my job change sufficiently enough that it warrants a different pay grade? The point factor lets you do that. Then the second thing you can look at is saying, okay, now that I have the points, then where does it place with market? Well, we know where market is on the salary schedule. We can then say, here are the points, and then how does that relate to, to, to step four? And then once you have that, you could take a look at, if it's a higher-level position, do we have that enough sufficient distance between that and my superior subordinate-level position? So there's a whole series of steps now that you can look at and say, here's how the position should be placed versus, well, I think it should go here.
Go ahead.
Follow-up question would be then, so HR, Emma, with a department head can say, hey, you're right, we've, we've done this, and this is what we need, and this is how you should, so they can work together to come up with the right, so it wouldn't just be one or the other saying, yeah, we need to make a change. They would actually work in, okay.
Right. Yeah.
Let's hope there's not a run-on, hey, I need, I need, I need.
Well, it shouldn't be for a while. There shouldn't be for a while, but probably you're going to want to establish a policy on some parameters in which that you're going to allow that to occur.
Yes.
But Emma has, you've helped her come up with a system to have the tools to be able to do this sort of thing.
They've provided me a full policy manual.
Okay.
In addition to what you've received.
Yes, sir.
In the systems that we're talking about, is there a, a no-salary-loss provision? If, let's say, for example, someone is higher on, on the ladder than what our study shows they should be? So would, I mean, we're going to put everybody right with the system, so if they come down a couple of levels, do they maintain their salary? I mean, does it recommend that they maintain their salary?
The answer is no one takes a loss in pay.
Okay.
Yep. And we'll cover in detail what will happen with, for employees, but we've, we've never recommended that you cut people's pay, it kind of as a Debbie Downer, it might be a, you know, kind of a morale issue. It absolutely would be.
And you're, you're not the only one that feels that way, but there are people that they go, they march by the, by what the paper says, and people lose their salary.
Sure.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
You bet. I, I think, in, just to kind of wrap this up, and then we'll move on to the, to the next slide. You know, this is probably the one area that I think Emma will spend most of her time on, because when, when we release, when the, the schedule actually has been released, and you see how, all of these positions, how could I possibly be placed in the same pay grade as all of these other positions? And employees don't necessarily understand this yet, that there's a lot of different factors that goes into, that goes into the placement, so. Yes, sir.
Before you move on to the next one, a couple of questions here. In your employee questionnaire, did you, does the questionnaire ask the employee where they worked before they came to work for the city?
No.
Why not?
Because, again, we're looking at the criteria of the position as it stands here for the city. We're not evaluating the person and their skills and ability. We're analyzing the position here for the organization.
Okay. So then the next question would be, does your questionnaire ask the employees why they like working for the city?
Again, this is not an employee survey in the respect of attitudes and adjustments. It's an analysis of the position for purposes of placement on the salary grid. Now, when we talk to employees and have, you know, have the conversation when we met with them, you know, we, we, we don't necessarily do that as a quantitative type of a thing. We talk about, you know, why are they, you know, in the position, you know, why are they here? But it's not a, it's not necessarily a part of that survey, because the, the position questionnaire is strictly focused on evaluation of the position for placement on a salary schedule. But when we meet with employees, we talk about, you know, what do, you know, what are the, not necessarily why they work here, because we're not here to do a attitude survey, we're not here to do a, an employee interest survey. We're here strictly to look at defining a compensation system, but we're also looking at, are there issues and concerns that need to be addressed as part of the compensation plan? Because that's really the only thing that we were hired to look at, is the compensation plan, and potentially some benefits. But the benefits, we were only asked to look at from a comparison of the non-union to the union benefits, not an external analysis of the benefits.
Okay. And then you also, in your report, you said that you met with the mayor, HR director, the city administrator, several department heads. Did your, and this is for looking at where the goals and policies should be developed or adjusted. Did you guys interview any other elected officials?
We had asked if that was appropriate, and we were not given that.
How are you going to answer that question?
Huh?
How were you going to answer that question?
Well, we asked to interview who, whatever stakeholders are appropriate, and these were the stakeholders that we were told were appropriate.
Okay. So they're the stakeholders who are appropriate. Those stakeholders, then, you're interviewing just the recipients of the benefit of the, and you're not going outside of the community?
I'm not sure how to politically answer that question.
We'll take a crack at it.
The elected officials that were in charge did not broaden that scope.
The only, the only elected official involved was me, right? And, and absolutely, I did not say you should not go outside. Absolutely, I did not say that. Are you kidding me?
Yeah, I don't think there's anything about excluding anybody. I think, what, and tell me if I'm wrong, but I think there is, that people look at those that are familiar with the job positions themselves, and the details, and the dynamics of each job position.
I agree if they...
Council members would.
Right. If, if they ask, who should I talk about, we wouldn't be on that list because we don't know anything about these job descriptions and stuff. That wouldn't make any sense to talk to us, in my humble opinion.
And, and I don't mean to implicate anybody. I don't mean it to sound that way at all. We usually ask, who are the appropriate stakeholders? We ask that to everybody. So those were the folks we asked, and so I didn't mean it to sound negatively or nasty or any way like that.
So it's a matter of who you should talk to.
Right. Exactly. Right. Right. Right.
I don't want to, you know...
Yeah, and I didn't mean it to sound...
Conversation, I don't mean to do that at all, but at, at two council meetings, I was very adamant about getting information of why or why not we're including the private sector at the same time we're viewing, we're reviewing, analyzing the public sector, because it's the private sector, these people paying the salary of all of us working for the city are also stakeholders. And council members are the elected officials who represent the other stakeholders. And I, when I read this study, I find it actually quite remiss in not including the economy, economic sector that's paying the public sector in this. And toward the end of this, I'll make a motion about how we address this, but I want to keep going with your presentation.
One thing, I know the mayor and I have talked about this a little bit, is we haven't done this for 12 years, and so we're already looking back and saying, next time we go through this, because in our code, it talks about it in two years, what things can we take away from this process? And some of those things, you have a learning curve a little bit, coming back to it, and it might be before we even start the next one, we get everybody together and say, what do we want to accomplish in this next study? That one includes city council, and we get a little bit more of a policy direction, those things there. So I, I would see on our next one, we'd probably have a little bit more involvement right up front, so we get some of those questions and things in there.
See, I, I would, I would have been a lot more comfortable with the study during the pre-review process if, if we had done it this time. This is a little bit disconnected, yet it's really connected in many ways. We have a rate study coming for our utilities. It's going to come out. We have a very expensive wastewater treatment plant, which we have to have. We all know it's going to be a substantial increase. That's going to come out to the public and say, you have to pay the sewer rates, the water rates, all these rates are going up at the same time that we're coming forward and saying, now we're going to also be a city employee, this is the way the public will conceive, perceive it, as they get a raise while our rates go up. And that, politically and even from a justice standpoint, it's very difficult to swallow those two at the same time. Just think about that as we go through this process.
And I don't disagree with that, but I also think you have to look at it from a perspective as that an investment in your employees is an investment in your community. And, you know, you're in the business to provide a service to your community, and the only way you do that is through your employees. And so, you know, we're not here to say that they need to be the highest-paid group of employees, because obviously, I, I think out of all the 17 years that I have been doing compensation plans, I, I have maybe a handful of municipalities that pay higher than the average. You know, I have one that pays at the 80th percentile, and that's not something that we typically recommend, you know? But, you know, most municipalities pay at the average, and that's what we're recommending here, because I think that's a fair and equitable wage for, for this, for this area and for what you need to do. So it's, you know, I think, I think it's, it's, it's not that unreasonable to put a compensation plan that has rules, that has standards in place, that has a, a fair and objective way to place people, that has a fair market value to employees so that you can attract and retain, you know, very qualified people, because you do have a, a great community, and it's, it's not, it didn't happen by accident. You know, it happened because you have, you know, people like yourselves who have dedicated themselves to become elected officials, and, you know, you do want to provide the best service available, and you're not going to do that if you have people that just come and go and don't care about the community that belong to. And the only way you can do this is by, is by offering a fair, fair and decent wage. You know, and, and when I, when I meant, you know, my comment before, and I apologize for, for the way it came out, is that, you know, there are times in which we do interview the elected officials, and it's done, you know, by, on a policy basis, you know, you know, where's your, where's your compensation philosophy, you know, and where do you want the organization to sit when it comes to, to compensation? And, you know, sometimes that happens, and sometimes that doesn't. And, you know, obviously, at this point in time, you know, hindsight is 20/20 vision in which we had done that, and it's obviously something this organization can learn from and do the next time around, and, and, but I think what's important here is to make sure that, you know, your non-union employees get the same fair and equitable treatment as your union employees do. But your appointments are very well...
And I support, I support that concept, and we do have very, very good employees.
We do.
I think the whole time I've ever been on the council, I've always been a advocate for our employees, because we do have really outstanding people.
But your point is very well taken.
Yeah. At the same time, I still have this issue about what the rest of the community is also getting paid when they're paying our salaries.
Yeah. And we did try to, you know, we do, in every organization, we do try to look at the private sector. The problem you have with looking at the private sector market is this, is number one, the vast preponderance of your positions have very few private sector counterparts. And so when you, A, try to compare different types of positions, the positions are very different. B, you have a hard time getting the data, because unlike the public sector, the private sector doesn't have to give us that data. So you rely on looking at, you know, Indeed and job advertisements, and we did do some of that work, but, you know, if you look at your clerical positions, they can be positions that are paid lower, or to, positions that are paid higher. So which ones are we really actually comparing? The one jobs, you know, some of the jobs you're competing very heavily against, and those positions you're not going to find in the advertisements, nor are you going to get anybody to tell you how much they're really paying, except of course for those that are telling you how much they, you know, I could get someplace else, and those, you know, like your engineers. You know, everyone's being closed-mouthed about engineers, because of course, you can, you know, they're, they're very hard to find right now, and they're, they're being, you know, very vastly recruited. And of course, everybody knows somebody who's going to pay higher for an engineer, you know, we know that. There's also a lot of inequities when it comes to the public and the private sector, and both Malina and I know that, because Malina just came from the private sector. I worked for the private sector, as well as the public sector as well, working in both healthcare and banking, before I moved to the dark side and moved to, moved to the public sector, where I worked for the school district and for a municipality. But there's so many intangibles that you can, you know, you can have in the, in the, in the private that you can't have in the public, you know? Things, you know, we, both Malina and I were kind of joking, both of us being Green Bay Packer fans, which we probably shouldn't say here in Seattle, but, you know, you can't, you know, slip somebody, you know, two tickets to go see, you know, the box seats at the Green Bay Packer game, which you can't do in the public sector, you know? Or give people gift cards, you can't even do that anymore, because those are tax buy, you know? You know, things of that, which, you know, are no longer things that you can't do in the public sector. Now, some of the benefits are becoming more in line. I mean, you know, the old days, the old adage used to be that you used to work at the public sector because you used to have average salaries and really, really high benefits. That's changing. You know, now you have slightly higher-than-average salaries and slight... and slightly higher than average benefits, because those benefits are coming down through no fault of anybody. It's just what's happening in the, uh, in the federal world. And we have no clue what's going to continue to happen in the federal world. But those are, are leveling. And so, as a result of that, you know, the wages are starting to creep up because those higher than average benefits are coming down. And so, um, so the advantage to becoming a public sector employee isn't longer, isn't any there. It used to also be that, being a public sector employment, you had a job for life. You know, you were never laid off. Well, that's, that's gone too, um, you know? So, um, you know, that, that playing field of what was different between public and private is definitely changing. And there's, um, people aren't seeing the advantage of why I should become, you know, go to public versus private. And you're seeing a lot more of Exodus out of public into private, uh, just because people don't want to deal with some of the stuff and, you know, some of the issues that are going on in the public sector. Of course, if everyone thinks the private's a fantasy until you go there as well, so... So, you know, so we do try to look at the private, but it's just not as easy to compare. It's just not as easy to look at those types of issues.
Okay. So, implementation. We've developed a schedule. We reviewed it with, uh, with, with the parties here. Uh, we've placed everyone based on that methodology that we covered. And now what happens is that we place, we, we slot the employees onto their respective step. They are placed on the step closest to their current rate of pay without a decrease. So, for some employees, that may mean a penny. For some employees, that may mean, you know, a couple percentage points, depends on just how far away they were, um, from that step. Any additional steps that the city might be able to afford would be based upon Doug and Emma's, if they have anything else that they, uh, you know, can provide for with funding. I have to say though, that a lot of times, the, you'll hear the argument, well, if I have not been paid to market, um, in, you know, since I've been here for 12 years, um, why can't I go to the max step? Because, you know, why, why can't I be compensated for that? The, the reality is, is that the organization can't afford it. I did an initial costing, and if you placed every employee by their 10-year date, it would cost you close, just over half a million dollars. And so, what happens is, for the purposes of getting everyone into the new system, that's how we, that's why we place them on the step to where they're closest at now without any decrease. And then allow, over the course of the next couple of years, to get into the system and then they're within market. Uh, looking at a September 1, 2017 implementation date, and Emma or Doug can talk a little bit more detail about that. But after implementation then, how do we maintain the system then? And I don't recommend that you wait 12 years in the, you know, for, for a review, okay? But we provided, um, with some policy direction for Emma on how to use the tool. And she'll take a look on if there's any official policies that have to be updated then, so that there's some consistency. That'll be up to HR to take a look at. But we recommend then that you have overall adjustments onto the schedule, based upon a set economic indicator. So, whether that is if the unions, um, don't quote me on this, okay? I know you're negotiations, but let's just say that, you know, the unions get 1.5% increase. You should be looking at that for your non-represented schedule as well. You know, the CPI may or may not be a set indicator, you know, indicator. But again, we know that you've got the union negotiations issue as well. Periodically reviewing the market. Every three to five years, you should be putting your toes out there and just checking to see, you know, what's, what's going on. Are we, you know, you can do a little mini-market update and just make sure that your wages are, are keeping trend. Are there some changes? You know, technology is kind of one of those positions for a number of years that was just kind of like this. You never know, let's just say, um, the fishing industry tanks in this area. I know unlikely, but let's just say that it does. And all of a sudden, you have an influx of individuals who need to find jobs, and that could certainly change your labor force. And that might change what you need to pay for, for wages. So, um, updating, just taking a look every three to five. Okay. Um, sorry, went back. In addition, um, we were asked to take a look at your benefits, uh, based on a review of what's happening internally. And how do the non-reps compare with the represented employees? And we're not going to spend a lot of time on this, uh, because the summary is in the executive report, which I understand that you all have. Just know that these are recommendations for the organization to take a look at, at a future date, whether you decide to or not. But we do have some time off considerations, recommendations, um, uh, for you to consider. Won't go into any more detail unless you want to.
Do we have an executive summary?
Yes. I emailed it to you all. I don't know what the date was. I want to say it was the 19th or the 18th. But I did email you all the attachment of the executive report with the summary of the costing for implementation.
So, enough said about the benefits. Again, just for something for you to take a look at. The organization can decide at a future date if they want to consider, uh, consider those options or not. Okay? Yes, sir?
August 16.
Thank you so much.
There you go. Any, are there any questions? Anything that we can answer?
Is that it? That was the end? Please cross, unless you have questions.
You know, if you're, you're concluding this, and there are no other questions in here, I would like to make a motion. And my motion is to request, yes?
Action.
I have a fair amount before you go.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, just conceptually, I did not realize it had been 10 or 12 years. I think you said it had been some time we presented. So, it, it's obviously time to take a look at this. And all of these comments, you know, I want to state that obviously, we want to attract and retain the best employees we can, while at the same time being its stewards. And I think as importantly as that prior statement, Mr. Almberg kind of hinted at it, is I want to make sure this is sustainable. Not one or two years. We're going to be doing a lot of budgets, but I got to Dr. Merriman, 20 years from now, that this can track. So, Melina, I think it was you said several times, you referenced, or you used the words playing, I wrote down, catching up, or that we're not falling behind. And then you referenced that you don't have any municipality that was actually ahead, paying above the market, considerably above the market averages. If everyone's always behind and we're doing this every three to five years, to me, there's a sustainability question there. How can everyone always be playing catch-up? And it may have been a general, I interpret it as a general statement about municipalities. It may have been directed to us.
Sure. Um, right now, the organization needs to get caught up. You have a number of positions that are behind in the market. In the, it, within a couple of years, your, your people should be at a, a marketable wage, they should be at market. So, if you're doing, you know, if you're doing a, a mini-market assessment every three to five, what that should do is, it should tell you, you should come back and be able to say, yep, we're doing okay. Maybe there's a couple positions here or a couple positions that are, that might be high or might be low. But if you are consistently evaluating it, then you shouldn't fall behind in the market. And your people should, should always be able to, to be at that, at that level. It's when you stop doing that checks and balances, or we're freezing wages for several years in a row, or, you know, things like that, where then you start to fall behind again in the market. So, you know, if, if you're going to wait seven, eight years, chances are, then you're going to be putting, you know, an, an amount of money back onto the schedule to get people caught back up again. That shouldn't, you shouldn't need to do that if you can review this every few years.
Here, let me give you an example. Um, I have had the opportunity to go back and to look at some of the schedules that I've created back in 2008, 2009, update them in 2014. In fact, right now, I'm working with a client where we created the schedule in 2005, we updated it in 14, and now we're updating again in 17. And if people do what we've told them to do, i.e., each year you put a percentage on the schedule to keep it up. And every three to five years, you take a look at the market rate. There's very little that has to be done with those schedules every three to five years. Because if every three to five years, each year you put a percentage on the schedule, every third or fourth year, fifth year, you take a look at it and maybe adjust a few positions, when we've come back out at those timeframes, um, it's, it's adjusting a few positions and you're good to go. And it's not all of a sudden taking and putting this huge effort in and these huge dollar amounts to get the schedules back up into place. But they've done what we've told them to do by placing the money on the schedule, doing the pay grading like we've told them to do, and then doing those little mini-market assessments every three to five years. And when we've come back out, it's been just a few adjustment of positions. Because there's always positions that kind of go astray in the market, you know, IT, engineering, you know, dispatchers or whatever it is that have somehow have gone a little bit, you know? Now, as Melina says, you don't do anything for three to five years. Well, then you're going to be spending a lot more money to get those folks back, back into line again.
So, we've got the concept. Makes perfect sense. If, and there wasn't a financial summary attached to this agenda bill, and I missed that email. I'm now reading it and I see the, the financial totals for 2017 and 2018. We always have financial statements, so I'm not sure why this agenda bill or a financial impact summary statement. So, that would have been appreciated. If you made the comment, Melina, that had we brought everyone to market immediately, with, you named the number 500,000.
If you brought everyone to their tenure, if you brought everyone to, I've been here for seven years and that might mean I'm going to go to step three, because that's just where their wages... If, if they've been there for 10 years and they say, why can't I go to step 10, because that's my tenure, that's $500,000.
Okay, hold that number. If we're talking about, we talked last time when I asked Dr. Merriman this, annual step increases, and you finished that statement with, it will take a couple of years to get there. That means as a city, we need to have an extra half a million dollars in three to four years? If everyone's going to be catching up to where they would be in three to four years, am I misunderstanding that?
Yeah, I, um, so... I, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how to, um, correct your thought here. Because no, that's not what we're saying. Um, I don't, I don't know the, the, you know, you guys have worked on the financials. But if you were to put someone at $20 an hour and based upon their 10-year, you know, that schedule shows that they should be at $30 an hour, and they're, you know, that's going to be an extra $20,000 onto that person each year, okay? That's what's going to make up the, that's what's going to make up this half million dollars in the one year that I'm talking about. By, by, you know, by allowing the employees that, that step. It's a, it's a graduated system. I mean, the, the increases are anywhere from 2.5% to 5% per that person each year or so. And you've gone, you've done the costings on that, yes?
I think, um, one of the things I see, I understand what your question is, because I thought the same thing. If we aren't taking the full bite right now, um, if the market average is around three or four in a step, it's going to take six or seven years to get all the way back to the top again. So, if there's a disparity of that half a million dollars, it would probably take that long before you reabsorb that back in, rather than doing it right up front.
Okay, let's fast forward six or seven years. We're talking about building a fire station and we can't come up with, we can build a building, but we can't necessarily staff it. I want to attract and retain the best employees, but if we set down this path, have we looked out six, seven, 10, let alone 20 years from now, unless we get creative and increase revenue? That's the number I'm looking for. Not today, tomorrow, in this budget cycle or the next, but in six or seven years, that's a pretty big deficit. Am I wrong?
It, it depends. There's a lot of variables to it. So, if you're phasing that in, you're right. I mean, we've always had the discussion about revenues versus the expenditure side. But at the same time, what you're doing is, then you can, in our next budget cycles, we have on next year, then we start looking at how do we calibrate those two to match each other. There's probably going to be some discussions and decisions we have to make from a revenue standpoint on how to do that. The other thing too, in those budget sessions there, there's a couple things we need to talk about on the expenditure side as well, that there's some efficiencies or some other things we can do. It's not just all the revenue side, but where do we want to prioritize our spending as well?
So, I'll, I'll hold that thought, because I might want to, before I'm ready to move forward, I want to see a little put into that. And I know you and I talked earlier in the day, which leads me to my next question. If the middle of the range, getting someone to market is a 3% to 5% increase annually, and we traditionally have tried to give a COLA of 2-ish percent, we're now adding 3% to 5 plus 2, so 5% to 7% to our payroll budget annually. And Dr. Merriman and I talked about that as well. I don't know if I've completely reconciled that. I kind of want to see some projections to make sure it's sustainable before we launch down this path. So, I'll just hold that thought. If our, well, I'll ask the question again, because I asked you on the phone. If our general budget grows at 3% to 5, I'm sorry, 3% to 3.5%, is what we talked about, how do we pay for payroll increasing at 5% to 7%?
There are, and we did talk about this, but for the benefit of everybody, there are three. When I would do the budget in the past years and look at payroll, there were always three moving pieces. And one of those would be, what is the projected COLA that we're looking at doing? So, there might be a cost of living allowance, you know, in this last couple of years, we've had 2%. And then I would know, okay, the next moving piece then, how many people are progressing up to steps? And as I think you guys noticed, more than half of our people are at the top. So, and each of our steps was, in the previous one, of 3%. So, I would be able to say, okay, I know 40% of our staff may be getting a 3% increase. That's a net 1.2% increase, 40% of 3%. So, I'd have my original 2% COLA, a 1.2% average step increase. So, it gives me, what am I at? 3.2%. The next, the third and final moving piece I'd look at is what is our attrition rate in employees? Because at any one time when we, Emma does her, um, your dashboard, we have 10 to 12 positions in process. And a lot of times, what you have is our employees that are up at step 8 and 9 are leaving the city or they're retiring. And what do we do? We hire back in at step 2. So, that recalibration of a higher pay, even though it's the same job, a higher paid person leaving and hiring someone in at the entry level at a lower amount, that salary savings actually takes away from that 3.2% COLA and step combination. So, while I have a 2% and adding a 1.2%, I might be subtracting in that a 2% because of that changes in attrition. So, usually that's kept us right about the same rate as inflation as our revenues have been. That's how we've been able to balance the budget through that.
And based on your experience, your tenure here, I have to accept that that has reconciled itself in the case. What happens at year 11 in this? Right now, we have, we have eight steps. We're going to 10? Year 11, nothing? COLA?
Right, there are the maps.
All right. And we have 63 pay grades. We've got two pages here. What are we going to?
26. From 63 to 23 or 26.
Close enough, 20, 27, okay.
23.
And so, if no one takes a pay cut, which I think is fair and just, I think this whole thing is, I want to restate, I think it's equitable and fair and it makes sense. I just want to make sure we can pay for it long-term. I thought in the slideshow, Emma, that you gave just general graphics, we had people though, that were close to, not close to, that were in that 60-ish percent or maybe up to 70. So, those folks would just come into a step and be maxed out fairly quickly?
There's our, there's a couple that are coming in at a higher step, so they will not have as much movement.
Okay. That, that makes sense. Okay, I'll stop at that point. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead. Oh.
No, 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 I didn't hear it. Go ahead.
So, I, and this is just, just a basic employment sort of over...
So I, and this is just, just a basic employment sort of over question. So if we're, we're hiring someone as a whatever, a clerk, you know, in accounting, and we're hiring them in, like, let's say they're brand new, you know, right out of college or whatever, associate, whatever they need, high school, at, let's say, $50,000, right? And they're on, they're in that, they're on that line, they're starting in at one, they're going up, just without a COLA. So let's say they do continue to work here, they get to their 10 years, they're at 65K, 70K, just based on, you know, all the percentage increases. And then you add in a COLA, let's say it is two percent, that gets them up to over 80. I mean, and then let's say we have to hire another clerk, they're going to come in and they're going to go back, they're going to make 50, right? They're going to be doing the exact same job as the person that's making 80. Is that, I mean, I just, in my brain, I wonder if that makes sense. Like, really, like, as an employee, like, if you're doing, if you haven't taken on any more responsibility, or you haven't taken on, you know, anything else, is it really, does that make sense to pay some, for us to pay $80,000 at tenure for someone doing the exact same job as someone? I mean, maybe someone could try and help me understand that.
You're going to be there for two or 15 years, though.
I mean, but really, a whole, that much of an increase, I just am having a hard time.
I might be able to help on that.
You don't wish to.
One of the things I look at, we've done a union negotiations and that in the past, and I always look at how big a percentage spread is it from step one to step 10? And it's been a lot of the same things. When we've looked at the minimums, we want to know, can we attract people? The very first fire contract I did here, the first one, the entry level was 65% or so of the top. We couldn't hire people in. So right now, I'm going to take a wild guess, it was like 24%.
Twenty-three, I believe it was.
Yeah. So if it was a $50,000 job, the top on that times 23% is going to be 62,000. So you're talking about really 62 to 50 over a 10-year period. So it's not like 50 to 80. That, that would be a pretty big.
Well, that's what, that's what it adds up, though.
Well, if you take, just the math, if you take 50,000 times .12, or did I, no, times .23, that's going to be, yeah, like 17-ish?
Well, the pay grade G starts at 50,000 and it maxes out at 67.
Yeah. So, so that's the, the thing there. It's probably not as high as 80, but it's more on the 67.
Well, when you add in COLA, it is two percent, right? You add another two percent on the top.
Two percent might be another $1,000.
Yeah. But isn't that compounded?
You know, I don't mean to tie you up.
No, I'm so sorry. No, it's okay.
I, I know your point there.
Maybe I'm not understanding it right.
But that's, that's why, and I won't speak for you guys, but that's why we look at the minimum slide here, because we want to look at the entry level wage, and then we look at the maximum, and we look at market for each of those, just to make sure we're not so far apart that it's really strange to hire in at a really low rate, pay up to a super high rate.
Yeah.
And then recalibrate back down to the low rate again. You want, the market's not going to let that happen. So it'll contract and keep that within a reasonable range. But that's maybe a better answer.
Okay, yeah. And just to me, wouldn't make sense for the people stepping in here, even if they weren't brand new, even if they came from another city and they just wanted to move here as a clerk. And they'd have been working 10 years at another city, and want to come here as a clerk. And they're going to step in at 50 and see the clerk sitting next to them. They're the same age, they've been working the same amount of years making 80, like, they're just.
Yeah, there used to be a day when people would come to work here, and you always hired it in at step two, or the mayor could say step three. But we noticed the last few years, because we were under market, people coming in would not come unless we said step six.
Yes, of course.
And it's because we were starting to get pretty skewed. So that does happen, what you're saying there, is if your numbers are off some, you start hiring in at a higher level and it starts costing you more.
From a philosophical point of view, there's two different schools of thought. You'll see some salary schedules where they only have two or three steps, because the theory is, once I get to step three or step four, we all know the job, the job is the same, there's nothing more I can do, and so therefore we should all be paid the same. There's others that say something like this. We've also built some that are different. In fact, I have one, a schedule in Tennessee that has 26 steps, where they say, no, each year I, I can add more value to the organization, because each year I have more that I, you know, I'm here, I can do more, I've, I've learned more, I, you know, I can, you know, because I'm here more, I have more institutional knowledge, and so therefore I should, I should be, you know, I should be paid more. So it depends upon what school of thought that you really, you know, really believe in. The other theory that you also have too, is that we're having problems with, and I'm being very stereotypical here, so I'm putting my warning out, is that you also have a generation that's coming in that's saying is that we have to have longer salary schedules, because they're not subscribing to this getting to the top fast, because they need to be rewarded for everything that they do. And if they get to the top fast, then they're being demotivated, because I'm not seeing that next step, I'm not seeing that reward, I'm not seeing that pat on the back. And again, I'm being very stereotypical when I say that. So you just, you know, take that with a grain of salt. So that's why we're seeing some of our salary schedules popping out even longer, because we've got this, this mindset of I have to keep being rewarded for what I'm doing, because I can't get stuck at the top and only get this one percent or one and a half. It's not incentive enough for me to continue to do what I'm doing.
And I, and I was going to speak to that. My second part was that, you know, I'm, maybe, I mean, Mayor just read at a council meeting, just a long list of our great employees that have worked here 10, 15, 20, 25, 30 years. So I'm not surprised that over half of them are at the top of that, at level, whatever we have now, eight, you know, going to 10. I, that does not surprise me, and I think that that's a testament to them, you know, liking. Hopefully, that means that they like working here and for the city, and that they're doing a good job. But, and at the same time, I think you have to have a maximum, though. Like, we can't, you can't keep compounding, as Joel said, that's not sustainable. Like, we, you just, you can't. It has to stop at some point. And yes, do your COLA, you know, there's a reason for that, to keep up with the inflation, but, but that's practical, that we have to, at some point, put a limit on, on a salary. And that's across the board. I mean, that just makes sense. So.
I disagree with you.
I am. I, I, I will say that I, I do agree that we need to, my thoughts on this are that we do need to be competitive to hire the best people. And in the, the two years that I've been on council, I've been a part of hiring, you know, for sure, one great employee in that, that process. And then I've watched us hire several other key employees too, department heads, police chiefs, and HR and finance. And I think that we have, have got some really good people, and I'm glad that we're able to hire them. And I think that we do need to keep up and stay competitive with, with other jurisdictions. But we also need to be responsible. We need to have a limit, you know, to what we can do. And I don't know if this is, because there's a lot of other priorities that we have to think about too, as council, that I have to think about as a council member. You know, I have people that come in and they say, we need a code enforcement officer, we need a new fire station. And so it's a lot, it's a lot that, to take on as a council member, of everybody wanting everything from us, and we can't. So I think that there has to be some limits. But I'm happy that this is more efficient. I mean, that makes me, if it's more efficient for HR and for our city to run, that's going to save money in itself. I'm all for that. I, and I also understand the difference between, difference between the private industry. And when I, I worked too, in the private sector as an accountant, and I got a raise or a bonus based on how the company did. We don't have that as a city, right? Like, we are here to serve the public, and that's how, you know, how we're paid, right? I mean, that just, it's a, it's a huge difference, so I understand that. I, I have a hard time swallowing, and then I've talked to Doug about this, I have a hard time putting a limit on a COLA. And I know it's a totally separate issue than it, but when we have somebody getting five percent and then turning around on January 1 and getting another two percent, and I, I don't really know a straight answer, if that's in our policy as a two percent, is a minimum COLA that you're going to get no matter what the, you know, CPI is? I, I don't know for sure, but, and that would be something I'd want to make real sure. I want to know what the, what we're really giving for COLAs, even if it's, and I can understand not giving, like, taking away, but I really want to look hard. I, I think it's unreasonable maybe to give a nine percent over a course of a year pay increase. I think that that's maybe a little, a little unreasonable for, for me to do a total for, for an employee's wage increase. So that's my only problem. And so I'd want to get some good answers on what exactly that is. And, and I also would like to know if this requires a budget adjustment out of us, if we adopt this to cover that increase from the general fund, and the 50,000 or 30,000 for 17, 51 from the general fund for 18. So those are my.
Yeah, Patricia and I are sitting here doing that, looking across the room. For a lot of these, because the change is going to come from fund balance during this biennium like that, we don't have to do an amendment, usually unless there's another revenue source. There might be a couple of tweaks in there, but I think that's probably how it would be handled. But we would do a budget adjustment, and what that would do, it moves some of the money from the ending fund balance in the different funds into those expenditure lines, so that the budget authority is there to pay that. And then next spring, we start the next biennial budget process, and then we'll be able to see all that in, and we'll set the budget to what we've established.
On your entry level, and then you were saying in three to four years, they would be at market level. Is the new entry level, from what you can tell, enough to recruit people to get them in? Because I know we've had some positions and nobody applied, or two that weren't even, have the skills, yet they applied. So I worry about that. But I also know, and some of you are concerned, yes, we have to be able to pay this and to sustain it. But I also have been here, as someone retired or transferred to someplace else, we didn't fill it. And if you don't take care of your people, that is the life of our customer service, is you've got to take care of your people. And so we may not be able to do some of the things we would like to do, but if you don't, and they also pay taxes, and they're going to pay the new sewer rates, and they're going to pay for dry cleaning, and they're going to pay for groceries. But we have sloughed off, really, some, a lot of this, because we didn't have the money. I mean, everything got frozen. I mean, you know, we declared an emergency, and the mayor couldn't even write over a certain check. I mean, so, but the life of the city's service is its people, and we still need to make sure to take care of them. That doesn't mean we're buying mozzarella for all of them, or giving them that kind of pay. We'd like to, because we see what effort that they put into it. But we have to catch up and somehow make this logical and fair. And if we don't do it now, I mean, it's been 12 years. I get embarrassed when I find out that it was 18 years that we hadn't fixed the fallout, two of them. I mean, you know, you, you look at the list of capital projects, we kept delaying and delaying and delaying. Well, there's a point, you can't delay the people. Sometimes you can delay and keep putting Band-Aids on a broken pipe to a certain extent, but I think we also need to, otherwise, you know, it's going to be 20 years and we still haven't done anything. And got to sustain it, but it looks like we can. But make sure that it's fair, so it doesn't look like we're favoritism to one group or another. You know, and I like your, this is, we're looking at the position, not what the person comes to us with. And this isn't the time to look at what they've gained while they've been here till they're evaluated. But we're looking at the positions that are needed and what the 13 points are for the scores and that kind of thing, so.
That's what I'd say.
One, go back. I did a, and I've got a couple of kind of definition questions before I get into my other ones. On the appendix A, the proposed salary schedule, A, the pay grade A is blank. Is that just because we don't have anybody in that?
Correct.
And what is A written down here? Okay. And then on the summary, on page 24, number four at the bottom, consider a PTO program. What does PTO mean?
PTO is paid time off. It's, do you have any further explanation than that?
Nope.
Okay.
And there's one other, oh, sorry. Hang on, there's some other chart somewhere. Sorry, I thought I marked all these pages. There was, I don't know if it was on, maybe, sorry, bear with me for a second. Oh, there we go. Labor market, page seven. You've got your tables of comparable organizations. Two of them have a DNP next to them. What does that mean?
Did not participate. They did not provide us information.
Okay. Thank you. Try to keep track of all my other things. So, I can, it's great that, that, well, one, it makes sense to do this evaluation based on the job description and not the person in it, because that's just the only equitable way to do it. On the other hand, I'm really glad that you invited employees to give you feedback and included that in, in the conversation. And while you can't quantify that, I think it does help give you a more well-rounded idea. And, you know, when our employees feel like their opinion and feelings are valued, that's, that's important. So thank you for including that in your methodology in some way. The position analysis that you received, where everyone sent you their general job description or duties, you said you needed one, at least one for every position. Were there any instances when you got more than one for a position and they were totally inconsistent, or was everything pretty much the same? Like, any significant differences for the same job?
What we, what we explained to the department heads was if there is a, if there was a, if there was a position title, and you had two people under that same title, that were doing different responsibilities, to give us, to have them both fill out a position questionnaire, so that we can see if there's any significant differences in those positions. That way, when we were working on placing those positions, if they needed to have different job titles as, for example, then we could, we could articulate that. Off the top of my head, nothing is really standing out. That's not to say it didn't happen, but I'm not recalling, you know, anything that just is popping into my head right now. Sorry.
Okay. And so in that case, if, if there were two people in the same job title that were doing different duties, would that be, and you mentioned maybe changing the job title, would that be considered a reclassification of that job, or would that, would a reclassification only consist of moving them to a different place on the chart and not necessarily changing their job title?
Because we were redoing the entire classification system, we didn't make anybody go through a reclassification. So if we changed job titles or move pay grades or anything like that, it just happened as a result of the entire job classification changing. So nobody had to do anything different as a result of it. So it just changed as a result of the classification.
Okay. Okay, appendix C, the appeal form, which I appreciate, there being a memo for that as well. Have you received any feedback yet?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if someone could fill this out until we adopted this.
No, you can't, if not, right, not this.
Right. I assume that was the case. But in the meantime, has, have any employees looked at this and been like, what, what is this?
That, that response, no. We've all understood exactly what's going on. They've been very well informed and have stayed updated. And so they are very aware of that process if they are interested in it, if this gets approved.
Okay. But any concerns expressed?
Well, tomorrow they have the opportunity.
We, tomorrow we are making ourselves available to speak with any employee that would like to see us. And we will go over anything in the executive report or the PowerPoint presentation if we can answer questions for them. And then after that, provided that the, the, the new schedule is adopted, then HR is making themselves available in the afternoon to start with employees who might want to start the appeal process. They'll be given a period of time. They don't have to have it done tomorrow. They'll be given a period of time. They don't have to have it done tomorrow. They'll have a couple of weeks to get that in.
And if this is not adopted today, will you still be here tomorrow to meet with employees?
Yep, yes.
Yeah, we don't fly out to tomorrow evening, so.
You're here anyway. And, okay, I mean, you said something that reminded me of a, another question I had and I just lost it.
Well, we're here tomorrow morning for you too.
Oh, great, yeah. Oh, the, the summary, the executive summary, I think that the blank looks that I think we all got, when you mentioned how we all had the info, we have a summary, but to my knowledge, if, if, I don't know if any council members received the actual report, like the whole report.
It's an email.
See, I just, I just has a Q and A and then a summary. So maybe I'm looking at the wrong August sixteen.
It should be about a thirty-page.
Yeah.
Executive report.
You want me to forward this to you?
Yeah, I know, I'm looking at one of them. It's the same as what I've got printed out. And I just, there's no, I, what I'm looking for is a graph that shows current versus proposed. And we have a conceptual, we're gonna move from the grid to the, change the grid with those numbers on it, but since the new grid is organized differently, there's not an apples-to-apples comparison for us to look at. Okay, I didn't know if we were missing information.
Yeah, it's so different. No, cause they're so different.
Right, and I understand that, but is there anything we can look at where we can actually see this position is going from this to this?
I'm not in any of the documents that you've been provided at this time. That's part of the costing implementation, so we do have that in the financial pieces for how we've been doing all the costing.
That would be helpful information. I should be crossing these off as I do them, sorry.
We do have a spreadsheet, should we get you a copy of that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I would appreciate that. Joel said the same thing in terms of receiving all the financial impact, um, documentation with this. Because philosophically, we all, we all get it, but, you know, we wanna, we wanna see the numbers. Uh, let's see, where's the whole report? No before and after, writing all this down. Here is my, oh, and to address Rick, which I know he's gonna touch on, um, the summary of the private versus public sector, I think was, that, that was well done. And I understand Councilmember Alberg's interest in comparing the public and private sector, but in my humble opinion, I think that's apples and oranges. And when Emma read the, I don't remember what it was, it was a code or an ordinance or something, it says, we compared municipal rates specifically. So according to our method of doing things, we compare municipal rates, period. That's how we do them. So I think if we're, I don't know if that would, if that's an exception we can make to add that info or request that info on a case-by-case basis, or if we need to put something down or change the methodology in terms of what, I don't remember if it was a code or whatever says that we do things. So I'm not, and, okay, yeah, that's, that's just a question thrown out there. And, and I need a more organized system of, need sticky notes or something. I might actually almost be done. I, okay, here's, I, the half a million dollars to bring us up to, if we were to bring everybody up to rate and backdate that in terms of how many years they've been here, the half a million dollars in one fell swoop, I think, if I'm understanding that correctly, um, that's a great summary of why we shouldn't go twelve years without doing that. And, and I didn't realize that that was the case either, and that's, that's kind of mortifying. So, yeah, just, just that example alone is a great example, is a good reason to not put this off any longer. And here's what I'm struggling with. I'm, I'm struggling with wanting to see more information, um, especially financially. But, but if we ask for more information and then postpone this, then the pay increases that our staff have been so patiently waiting for, for months and months and months, will continue to be delayed, right? And so I want the information to make the best possible decision and look at this, but I also don't want to make it sound like when we say we want to be competitive and we want to value our employees, et cetera, et cetera, that that's just lip service. Does that make sense? Cause if we put some, if we delay something like that, then we're not really putting our money where our mouth is, no pun intended. So I don't know if there's an answer to that. I just, I'm struggling between continuing to kick this can down the road and wanting more information so we can make a more educated decision. So that's just me thinking out loud.
Maybe a rhetorical question. You've referenced benefits. We talked about benefits as part of compensation, but I think when you referenced benefits, it was more paid time off, sickly vacation, not so much insurance. I'm thinking insurance, medical benefits, dental. Correct, you didn't touch on any of that.
We did not do that. No, we were not asked to do that.
And I know we had to make some, I'll call them cuts. We were, we looked at the plans in twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen, when we made some changes, added the high deductible health plan. And Dr. McGrath, you referenced that, where what was traditionally seen as maybe good pay, real good benefits, for us now kind of step down to be a little less in benefits. I think we still need to keep looking at those benefits, cause.
We have to.
Hard to get a plan that pays for filling a. A dentist that'll take it right now to see his dental plan. So, sorry. So I think we want to keep that in perspective too, is, is weighing out what we're able to provide, medical benefits in terms of compensation. I want to take, well, I want to say something and I appreciate what Councilmember Heisen said. As far as not wanting to kick this can down the road, we have traditionally, though, in my five years here, not made decisions in workshops. Much to my frustration, we didn't take action, uh, we'd only take action in regular council meetings. So even if this went to the next council meeting, I don't think that's a showstopper. Although I'd love to be able to always take action at these meetings, cause it's more efficient. But the market, let me try this market versus tenure thing once again, and I'm just looking at the cost of this. Conceptually, I think we all agree, we want to get this done. Let me restate this and tell me if I've got my head around this. If everyone came in at their current tenure, it would, for a lot of people, max out the pay scale with steps. And if that was implemented immediately, that's a cost of half a million dollars.
Correct.
Ongoing and increasing, based on COLA, if we.
It, it reestablishes your base when you're adding that base and then you're paying on top of that each year.
People retire or move on.
And I wouldn't recommend it.
Yeah, and we don't recommend it. When we throw out that half million dollar number, it's purely a calculation because it's an argument back to, cause employees will say, why don't you do that? And our response is always, because you can't afford it. And that's, I mean, it, it was a rough costing. It was a real general rough costing. So, you know, after, at a certain point, you get that general number and you say, yep, okay, we know it's gonna be that ballpark, so.
And so I want to take this, just walk through this, cause we go through budget cycles and we get presented with, oh, we're down to a million dollar deficit. Now we'll live down to four hundred thousand and, you know, somebody doesn't get their Mr. Manhole or whatever it is. So the public's probably wondering, what was that comment about right now? There is an explanation, trust me.
Okay, we didn't get it. We didn't get it.
It's an internal joke. So, but if everyone was at step one, let's just say they were at step one right now, where they get placed on the steps, which they're not, on average, they're probably gonna be placed at, I'm gonna say five, for hypotheticals. If they're placed on step one, in ten years, we would recognize that approximate half million dollar difference, correct? So if they're at step five, we're gonna get there in about five-ish years. So I just want to make sure we're prepared, and I'd almost like to ask for, whether it's Patricia or Dr. Merriman, to cost that out, to make sure we're prepared in the next several years, whether it's, the most conservative estimate, it would be ten years, cause everyone, if they're at step one, it would take them ten years to max out a tenure. Correct? Or if they come in somewhere in the middle, let's say it's five, in about five years, they would be at tenure, assuming there's no turnover.
Yeah.
Is that a fair statement?
I think it's gonna be tough to do that, cause number one, A, and, and I, and I haven't seen all the, the recent costing, but you, you've got folks that are placed all over the schedule right now. So it's not like everybody's placed at step one and not everybody's placed at step ten. You have folks placed throughout the entire salary schedule at this point in time. Because you have folks that are new to the organization, you have folks that have, obviously, as, as you've indicated before, the mayor read off, you know, the wonderful folks that have been here for so long, so you have folks at the top end of the schedule. So you're gonna have folks that are gonna top out relatively soon, you have folks that are gonna take five years to get there, you have folks that are gonna take ten years to get there. So you have folks that are throughout the whole process. So you don't want to all of a sudden say that everybody has to get to the top, because the goal of the system is to get to step four. The goal is not to get to step ten, because that's why this, that's why the schedule drops off once you get to step four. Instead of having your three percent steps that you currently have in your current steps, we drop off to two and a half percent steps, cause you're going above market. So, you know, your, your, your schedule becomes more cost-effective beyond step four than your current schedule is. So the goal is to get to step four, not to get to step ten. So you've got that issue that you've got to contend with. And so it's gonna be very hard to try to cost what it's gonna be for everybody to get to, cause again, the goal is not to get to ten. So you've got this, you've got this mishmash all the way through the schedule as it currently stands right now. And you're gonna have people that are gonna make it through the schedule, but you're gonna also have a lot of turnover over the next couple of years, cause you have more people that are gonna be dropping off, cause you've got more people that are gonna be retiring and that are gonna be coming on. So it's gonna be a really difficult to figure out where, and you're not always gonna be starting people at step one as well, even though step one is very competitive, you still have the opportunity to say, hey, I've got somebody who's gonna come in at maybe step two or three, because they're coming in with three or four or five years of experience and we want to acknowledge that years of experience. So I'm not sure how you're gonna cost all that out to figure out what that's going to be. So the premise that all of a sudden we're gonna add five hundred thousand dollars is really kind of a misnomer, that all of a sudden we're gonna place everybody where they're gonna be, cause they're not gonna get there.
I didn't come up with the five hundred thousand.
No, I understand that. No, I understand that.
So you did that cost estimate?
Right, I know, I understand that. So the point is, we're not trying to say everybody has to get to that number. It's gonna, now we're saying, we're resetting the bar and saying, no, we're not gonna put you onto this, we're not gonna say you're gonna go to step ten. We're saying, we're, we're setting the bar completely.
Is step ten not inevitable if someone's here ten years?
Yes.
It is inevitable or it's not inevitable?
No, it is, if, if I'm here ten years, I will get to step ten.
And you said we want to get everyone to step four, but not to step ten. Why would we not want to retain employees and get them?
No, my point is, the goal is to get to step four, because that's market.
Right.
And then beyond market, then the range, the percentage increases decrease, so it's, it's less expensive steps than your current system.
I understand that.
So they will get, eventually, if they continue to stay here, they will get to step ten.
And in your calculations, that rough cost, and I know there's a lot of moving parts, is approximately half a million dollars. So if everyone started today at step one, at their current pay grade, and we wait ten years, we know people are going to retire and move on, that's the most conservative estimate that it costs us half a million dollars. On the other side of that, it might only cost us a hundred thousand, but it's, we see numbers right here that it's costing us fifty to eighty.
I think we're gonna need to answer a question, cause it'd probably be Patricia and I trying to cost that out. The most conservative is a half a million dollars. And if we modeled that, I probably wouldn't come back and say, it's gonna cost you half a million dollars. I'd probably come back and give you a range.
Right.
And say, we know it's half a million dollars on this end of the bracket, and then as we model this out, I'm probably gonna put in something like a seventy-five percent attrition factor or twenty-five percent. And just see if we can come up with a bottom bracket that says, okay, worst case, it's this, maybe it's gonna be this, just depending how our attrition rate runs. And that would give us at least a range to work within, that we can plan on.
Okay. And, and I, I guess that's what I would ask for, just to make sure, budgets are never fun for anyone, and if, I mean, conservatively, in this budget cycle, we're adding, well, a hundred and thirty thousand, I'm getting around, fifteen, eighty. What does that look like then, at the next budget cycle and the, two years after that? So I'll stop at that. Thank you.
Before, I, you wanted to say something, I think, right? Before, okay. Uh, just, just, I, I just want to clear the record. I, I want to say, we've had, we've had this, um, statement made two or three times during this meeting, that we haven't done a salary review in twelve years, but actually, Dr. Court, uh, had a salary review, reviewed done for non-reps in twenty fourteen. He did that internally with staff, but that was done in twenty fourteen. So, you know, as many times as it's been said at this, in, in this meeting, I want to clear the record, so. Anyway, uh, did you, did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yeah, yeah, I'll just, I'll throw this out there before Rick makes a motion. Um, I, when I was thinking out loud and I'm struggling between adopting and postponing, I, I have made a decision. I'm not gonna make a motion or anything, but this is what I'm thinking. I, my recommendation would be to get us all the detailed financial data, the apples-to-apples comparison in terms of, you know, employees and pay grades, et cetera. Um, cause the two separate grids are great, but it's, it's hard to follow in terms of a particular position. Um, so I want a chance to review that information and obvious, and this will be brought back to us as soon as possible, obviously. Um, since you're going to be here tomorrow to answer employees' questions anyway, I would also be more comfortable if we use that opportunity to make sure every employee that wants to meet with you and have questions has a chance to do so. Have you already sent out a thing letting everybody know that you guys are gonna be here all day tomorrow? Like, how do employees know that that's?
It's been communicated through the directors, through the information that we provided about the study. So it hasn't been as calendar invite to everybody, but it's been communicated to the individual groups or the individual departments.
Individual, okay. So you didn't send up everyone at oakharbor.org?
No, cause it's only the non-represented employees.
That makes sense. Okay.
Yeah, it's only select you and the H group.
I knew that. Yeah, that makes sense. Um, okay, so just, yeah, personally, I'm not comfortable adopting this today, because I want to see the financials and I want, um, I want as many of the impacted employees as possible to have a chance to talk to you, so that if you need to kind of look or reevaluate anything, then you have a chance to do so now, before we adopt it, instead of waiting for an appeal process, if there is one, if that makes any sense. So that's me thinking out loud again, rhetorical. I know Rick's been waiting a long time, so.
Counselor Monk.
I guess I don't quite understand what Councilwoman Heisen is asking, because I just heard Emma say it's gonna take quite a while to go through and point everybody with their points, the thirteen things, to evaluate them, to see where they are. You don't automatically know where they're going to be on the chart. You roughly do, and we know they won't get any less salaries.
We, that was part of the process through the study, was to get the new schedule and then also do the placements for us. So that is done, and that's what we use for the costing.
Okay, well, she was asking, she wanted to see where they are today and where they are going to be tomorrow. So if it's already done, it's already done, so.
Yeah, but I, I've seen that. Yeah, we didn't get that.
Actually, I thought you guys did. I, I got.
It's confidential employee information, because it has all the employee data on there. Um, so in order to provide that as a document, we would want to make sure that we provide you with the information that you need, but not the confidential information that's specific to the individual employees.
Can you get it to us without specific?
Yes.
I, I mean, in my brain, I'm seeing like a, a general, not, I don't need to know exactly like what step you're gonna be at or what step he's gonna be, like, just a more general, this is how many, like, something that's not as, I don't need to see everybody's business, but just, just a general bottom line. This is what the. This is what the shifts are, how many are shifting in, what the numbers are, so maybe more what I would be wanting to get at.
I guess the second question is, hasn't our finance director already figured out numbers? I mean, we're not gonna know the next 10 years, but I meant, they've already figured out what it's going to be, they're already looking at budgets already, whether or not we can afford this. We don't know what our revenue's going to be in five years or four years or 10 years. I mean, so we'll have to cross that bridge if we come up short and there's another downtake. But as far as, I would assume that they wouldn't have brought this to us if we didn't already have numbers for the finance. And I guess, why it has to be voted on today? There was a reason why to put it on here and make it action. And if we delay it, what, what are the penalties?
Hi, can you put your answer parting out? So the costing was based on a start date of 9-1, so the costing numbers would change. Can you come up here and speak to me?
Sure.
So the costing was based on a 9-1 start date to come up with the numbers, the impact on when it would happen, and it was done based on the study. So those numbers were provided to Doug and Emma, and they were, they have all the details. So whatever, whatever's they need to provide you, they have. And what is appropriate, like Emma said. Anything else?
Oh, sorry, while you're here, increase of $50,304, 3301 from the general fund. Where is the other $20,000 coming from?
So, general fund has a portion of the employees.
We also have senior center, the management. We also have the 101 straits. We have 401 water sewer, solid waste, and storm drain, employees that are leads. So the majority of those funds are union represented, so this is just the non-represented.
Perfect, thank you.
And general fund has more non-represented, is why it was a bigger impact.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna piggyback on your comments about Dr. Court's increases, wage increases for non-represented, and that's what I recall. But I believe we also have built into the budget, and please correct me, Dr. Merriman, if this is not correct, didn't we have COLAs built into the budget and exercised with non-represented employees for the last several years?
No, first, 17 and 18 we did.
For this budget cycle?
Correct.
Okay, and that was at, help me out with the percentage again.
2%.
2%, so we have been doing that. And then before that, Dr. Court had one that he had worked into to help keep the employees up at least with COLAs based on a perceived inflation factor.
Yeah, I think over the last, I'd say, six or seven years, we had a four-year period where there were zero COLAs.
Okay.
And then in this biennial, we have 2% each year, and I think there was probably one right about the last year or so of Larry's term, there might have been one in there.
Right.
I just don't have it right in front of me.
So then with this rate study, then we just wages based on the rate study plus the COLAs? Or this includes the potential COLAs?
These numbers, these numbers here, I think, are just the effect of the rate study, the 15 and the 80. I think you backed out the COLA on those, is that correct?
So the spreadsheet I provided did have steps and COLAs involved. Whether or not, I don't know what was provided in executive summary, so I don't know what you guys were given.
Well, that's kind of a missing link right now on what the impact is, because where I wanted to go with this is to find out where the high and the low averages are with the increases as a result of this rate study.
Okay, so if you look at where we're currently at, if we did do this as of 9-1, it would include anybody that received a step. So all the COLAs for 17 are done, they happened on January 1st. So everybody currently has COLA in their salary. So with the adjustment for the salary survey and anybody that received a step increase or is projected to based on the new schedule, the whole, the total for that would be, for 17, would be a 3.8% increase. $50,304 would be the total impact.
That is for?
2017.
2017, that is with the COLA and with the step.
COLA's already in there for 17? It's just gonna be the salary survey and anybody that received a step in 17?
Okay, I understand that.
Okay, so 18?
So we're looking at almost a 4% increase for 2017 for employees.
3.8, yes.
3.8.
Yep. And then for, without the COLA, because we already put it in our budget, so it's gonna be, I didn't go into the detail of what the difference in COLA would be, but we already budgeted for a 2% COLA for 2018. So if we look at this with just any of the steps that will be occurring in 18, the impact would be $82,080 or 3.2%. And then if you add it in the COLA, 2%. But that, you can't really add that in and really look at it as that's the true increase because COLA is already included in our budget.
For 2017?
And 18, yes.
Well, that's relating it to the budget.
Mm-hmm.
When you break that out, I wanna talk about the individual raises, wage raise increases by city employees. I'm looking at kind of two different things there. I know it's in the budget.
Right, so that's why I didn't include the COLA total when I, when I gave you the 82080, that was with the step increase on the new schedule. If we look at the COLA, if we take the COLA in here, and I say, the COLA increases nine, well, the COLA and the step would be a total of, well, $174,912 because COLA has an impact. But that's COLA as if we didn't budget for COLA, so it's gonna be different.
I understand what you're presenting.
Yeah, because currently, there is an increase in the budget for COLA. So we'd have to take that out and calculate what we said per person their COLA would be, compare it to what the COLA is now.
The headline is, non-represented employees get a 3.8% raise.
Because of the fact that their, the schedule was reevaluated based on market?
Yeah, okay. Then, then on Dr. Merriman's discussion about the budget balancing equation about attrition, does the attrition, and maybe this house, you can have this tip of your tongue here too, is attrition mostly from retirement? Tell me, what areas of attrition are we really having trouble with that are non-retirement?
The ones that I've seen, it's people, you have retirements, you might have?
I'm saying non-retirement lots, because retirement's gonna happen.
Sure. You have those, and then you have people, one of the things I noticed in Oak Harbor since I came here, where when I worked down in the Seattle area, your people would be with a company for quite a while. Here you get Navy orders and things like that. I noticed that longevity in employees is a lot shorter because you have people rolling out with.
Right. So when we take retirement and employment, because we know, we've, we've lost a number of employees and friends because their spouses get orders, go someplace else, and they're gone. So when we take just the job position itself with the city with non-outside influences, do we really have an attrition problem? And if we do, which areas are we talking about?
I don't think there's an attrition problem. We have a recruitment problem sometimes, but the attrition, we're no different than any other place. I don't think that you could separate those who lead in any particular area and say, we have a problem in that area. It's just the normal course of business.
Okay. I'm just gonna, I'm gonna hold my motion until after the council takes action on this resolution and, because my motion probably doesn't have any effect on the outcome of the vote.
So, who's counsel? Counselor Cervantes?
Just my comment, I'd like to, I am now listening to Patricia's comment. Patricia, if you wanna sneak back up here and help me understand. We've got, we've got, it might be a line item in the budget. We've got $80,000, I'm gonna round, $80,000, just the cost of the step increase. And you said if you factor in the COLA, it was 174. And you said the COLA, the 2% was already budgeted, so the 2% of the pre, the current salaries?
Yes.
What is the difference, do you know, between?
I didn't go there. Until this was past the budget side of it, I haven't gone into that level of detail, but that will happen for the budget adjustment. I can do that if I need to. But it won't be that.
It won't be huge. I mean, it's, it's 2% of 80, right, roughly? Is that a fair?
Yeah.
Right, okay. So unless you can just absolutely reassure me, both of you, that this is sustainable five years from now, 10 years from now, I'm happy to make the motion. Otherwise, I'd like to maybe wait till our next council meeting personally, see those numbers before we take action.
Counselor Mudd?
I, I agree. My question is, hypothetically, if I were to make a motion to postpone until we have a chance to see the spreadsheet and all of the backup data from the executive summary and until you have a chance to talk to any and all and every employee, and if I were to ask you to do that and then come back to the September, the next council meeting on September 5th, would that be enough time for you to?
To keep the implementation date? Does it, or?
Or to? I mean, obviously, the, the numbers aren't necessarily gonna change, but if you were to tweak the data in any way, based on a conversation today, based on what you hear from employees, based on whatever, I mean, I don't know how, if, if there's, I don't know if there's any room for, you know, adjustment in one direction or the other. I'm just wondering if the 5th would be enough time for you to come back with this, and if you can go ahead and get us the data so that we can all look at that and be familiar with that by the time it comes back to us. I'm hesitant to ask to put things on the next meeting if that's, you know, too soon. So, is that reasonable? Joel, do you wanna make a motion?
I don't know if we need to make a motion for that unless you want a specific date and time for that data. It obviously shifts the effective date, it's not 9-1 at that point, it's.
Yeah, and the numbers will change very slightly because some people will get step increases during September, so you may have a little bit of, so you might have to recalculate that spreadsheet.
Would it be possible to do that retroactively as of September 1st if we don't, we can't be shaking your head at this point?
Yeah.
Just, um, so I suppose if we aren't going to do anything that doesn't necessarily require a motion, we could just kinda make a request for more info and we'll see if we come back at the next meeting? Or do you need?
Just make it happen. It might be nice, just for the record, maybe to have a motion to bring it back at the next council meeting. And then we've got a clear record of what we did and where we wanna go from. You know, either way, we can bring it back at the next meeting just by this discussion. It depends what you guys wanna do.
I guess I, I guess I feel like I have enough information. We've got people who think this is sustainable, who would do our budget. We've got some people just wanna see a little bit more information, but is it really gonna make a difference in how you vote? We have a system in place with a manual on how HR can sustain it. 3.8% raise is a lot less than some of our fire and police have gotten, our unions have gotten. So in a sense, we're saying, hey, forget you because you're not a union. So we have to do this because they're a union, but we're saying, well, we don't have to do this because they're not union. I, I, I see a disparity here. We're saying on one hand, and Rick is saying, well, we have this rate increase and, and we're gonna say, we're giving a 3.8%. How much percent have we given the fire, I'm sorry, but our unions, I think, are getting more than that each year on what was negotiated. So in a sense, I think we're, it looks like we're treating them like dirt. I mean, I wanna be sure we can sustain this, I want it to be fair, but what information other than you're looking at, they're crossing out names, but they've given you the difference? I guess what information, we asked to have this voted on at this meeting, I guess, and for postponing it, there truly is a lot, a lot of questions, but it seems like you've gotten yours answered, you want to see apples and apples, I guess, but they're saying you really can't go from some of the bars because it's a new, a new system, it's not 64, it's gonna be 22 or 26, whatever. So there isn't a direct correlation, but you've already figured out kind of where people are going to be, but we don't need to know that number, I mean, we don't need to know the names. It's their, but I don't know if I even need to see that. I mean, I've got a general number of what it's gonna cost on the increases. I just, I guess I'm trying to figure out why we're delaying the vote. What, what is really pressing? I mean, have your questions been mostly answered or is there really some burning detail you have to see before you vote yes or no? You probably have a pretty good idea how you're gonna vote right now. So I, I just, why are we delaying?
That's totally valid, that's 100% valid.
Hey, you guys, make sure direct.
Sorry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry. Ms. Mudd's point are absolutely valid and well-taken and, true. I'm trying to think of, again, a diplomatic way to say this. I take some issue with the amount of info that went into this and backs all this up versus the amount of information we were provided, if that makes sense. That might be more of a principal thing than an affect-my-vote thing, I admit that. But it, it kind of concerns me when you didn't realize we didn't have that breakdown in our packet and that Patricia didn't realize that something wasn't in the executive summary. And I'm not like calling anybody out, I'm just saying, why didn't everybody know exactly what information we were provided, if that makes sense? Like, there just seems to be like a communication breakdown there. And so that might be more of a principal thing. I'm also concerned that the consulting with all of the affected employees, all of the affected employees weren't necessarily spoken to, and I want them to have an opportunity to do that.
Is that? Mayor? Is that true? Do you know, I mean, did everyone have a chance to go talk to Emma or someone or not? Do you know?
I can't say that for sure, but I think they did. I think they were given notice that, that in McGrath, people who have come here three times, maybe, yeah, three times. So I think that they had an opportunity. I don't know that for sure, but I think so.
Yes, I can answer that one. McGrath did talk to those individuals that we interviewed. In addition, when we were getting the numbers put together, those went out to each department head, and then they were given information on their staff, meet with their staff, and go over that information with them. So there are other opportunities, even aside from meeting with McGrath, to talk about each employee's line on that chart and where they stood with this.
So if we've got an employee in a department that perhaps didn't get, or didn't feel that they did, then that would be the department head fault, I assume?
Or, yeah, or someone was out or something, you know, who knows what, could come up on that, but everybody should have had a chance to do that. It's good.
I, yeah, I'm, that is a concern of mine.
Counselor Cervantes?
Just for me, in response to Ms. Mudd's comment, I anticipate supporting this, but we're gearing up, we'll start our next budget cycle in 2018, correct? Next year? Start it hopefully earlier, or just, we, we continue to talk about have it, having council retreats and really establishing what are our priorities, and then putting dollars behind those priorities. So for me, I mean, the number one thing I hear besides possibly utility rates is streets. And so in 2018, we're gonna be sitting here discussing, how do we pay for whatever it is? And that's one of those priorities. So I would just like to see, I haven't had that information, see how does this affect probably the next two, at a minimum, two budget cycles? And I know there's a lot of interpolation you're gonna have to do, and best guess, 'cause it's impossible to get that level of detail, we can't prognosticate who's gonna retire. You know there's some more senior people that might retire, and you can get a good guess. That's all I'm asking for, so that whoever follows us, or if we're still sitting here in two budget cycles, wondering why we have, I wanna, I'm an optimist, why do we have a $2 million excess in our general, but if we have a deficit, we, we just know the history of, hey, we want to treat the employees well, we want to make sure they're at market rates, and that's what we prioritized. The streets, we're gonna work on them when we can, or whatever, so that's all I have on that for me.
Yeah, and I would, oh, I'm sorry. I, I would agree. I think for me, it's more looking, looking ahead, as Joel, Councilmember Cervades said, to how is this going to affect, you know, taking into your calculations, the years, years ahead, past this budget cycle, when we do go into our next budget. And not, not that it's not something that, that I would support too, because like I said, I really wanna see us, like you guys have said, those starting, you know, to attract the good, good people when, when we do have turnover. And I see a lot of people retiring soon, you know, we, we've talked about that, and I wanna make sure that when, that we're ready for that, when that happens. So that's, is very important to me. But I also wanna to look at the numbers, and I, and I too, as Tara said, Councilmember Heisen, am concerned that I, you know, wasn't given a lot of numbers too, and I'd like to see those as well. Nothing in detail, like I said. And, and, you know, and I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head, what are, it is concerning to me to say, okay, are not our union, our representative employees, you know, they're, they're pretty strict with their, you know, we pass their agreements, and they have a negotiating table, we don't have that per se for the non-reps, and I understand that, so and, and it's on me, I'd like to go back and look, and what are they getting? What is their steps? I, I guess I've not seen a step chart maybe for, or I don't know, not as familiar with the unions and, and how to stay competitive too with what their fellow workers are getting, we talked a little bit about that. So I, you know, I'd like to look at that too, a little more. So that, those would be my reasons for maybe putting, putting it off to the, to the next council meeting. I'm not, again, not that I wouldn't support it, there are many aspects that I do, do like, and I thank you guys for your work on this, and Emma, and, and all of our employees that participated and gave their input to try and make this a, a better system. Like I said, I really appreciate a really nice implemented system. And it's concerning to me that we didn't know that Dr. Cork did one in 2014 until today, or I didn't, I wasn't around in 2014. So there's just some ins that maybe were not, you know, details that I'd like to see.
Thank you.
There are pay raises affiliated with this resolution, right?
Like adjustments or increases?
Yeah.
They would get their step increases, and there might be an adjustment for them to get placed on the schedule.
Okay, so, so if I made a motion to, to approve this, would it revise that our next council meeting, you guys provide the data we're asking for? That would stop those adjustments until that meeting? That didn't come out right. If I, if I, if I make a motion, we pass this, and we discuss it at our next council meeting, can any adjustments be retroactive to the 1st of September? Could it be done that way?
If you're asking if you make a motion to pass the resolution now, when that goes into effect? It would go into effect the 1st of September. If you're just asking to learn information after the fact, the resolution's still going to go into effect if you vote to pass it.
Still go into effect the 1st of September.
Yeah, and legally, you can't retroactively pay people unless they're in a union.
I can't write a check retroactively, I do it all the time.
Post a check, you don't.
But they all might bill retroactively.
I'm sorry, I, I had one more thought too. I think that going forward, if it's possible, again, looking ahead to the future, when we do this again to keep up, is this something that we could time to, time in our budget cycle, so that we're not in the middle of a budget cycle like we are right now? Is this something that, that we could do in, in the future to, to take effect, so that we're, we're all kinda on the same? I know it would be a lot for us to, to think about and look at, but something maybe to get it a little more in sync, so that we're not doing budget amendments or worried about mid-cycle budget changes. That would be maybe something that I would consider or think about wanting.
I think that's one of the things we're trying to get to, and the consultants also
mentioned that. I think once we get a model established and we stick to it, maintain it, where it's not such a big workload to do that, then you can incorporate it into your budget cycle in some method, and it wouldn't be a big onerous project to do it. But we have to get very specific about it.
I make a motion, we delay any further conversation on Resolution 17-15 until our first meeting in September.
Second?
So we have a motion to delay any further conversation on Resolution 17-15 until the first meeting in September? Motion made in second, any discussion? Yes, Councilmember Luns?
If we delay it and vote on it then, then that means the pay raise, if it goes through, will not start until October 1st.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay.
Councilor Cervades?
And what's new, without making a career, you guys think that's enough time to make that financial analysis?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Any other? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's what she wants. Okay. Ken Ho, please, Councilor Almberg?
Yes. Mayor, if you may please, I'm gonna make a motion to request that agenda item be included in our next council meeting to discuss and consider a non-represented employee merit, pay, and promotion policy, and to consider a study to compare private and public sector jobs of similar, similar characteristics. And this only takes a second to be put on the agenda.
You can read it. Can I say it real slowly?
You have to bother to read and then...
I thought with the new system, it's all I had to do is say it, it automatically happened.
I'm trying to listen that fast.
Okay, so we have a motion that's gonna be read again, we don't have a second so far. Can you read this right?
Down here, Severance. What I wrote on that?
Want me to read it?
Good. Councilmember Almberg made a motion to request that an agenda item be included in our next council meeting to discuss and consider a non-represented employee merit, pay, and promotion policy, and to consider a study to compare private and public sector jobs of sim, of similar...
Characteristics.
Characteristics.
Is there a second?
I'll second that, 'cause I wanna...
Thank you.
...hear something here.
So, that's all we need?
That's all you need.
So, so, I guess I have a little question. So you wanna have a discussion about that?
It's, it's a discussion. I don't have a timeline on it. And to speak to that motion, if I may...
Yeah, I guess we don't even need...
No?
No, we don't even need that. It'll be discussed after the...
Okay.
I mean, it doesn't even be debated or voted on, I'm just, I'd be interested, it looked like he was about to say something.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I don't mind having more discussion.
Well, I, I would normally second something so we can discuss it, but if it's an agenda item, it just needs a second, it gets put on. I just wouldn't wanna make sure that wasn't an onerous task. If it's just a line item to discuss it, I'm okay with that. If it was actually having the staff have to provide something by then...
It's just a discussion.
What do you think, Dr. Merriman?
Usually what you do on this case, take some motion in a second to get it on there, we'll put it on the agenda, and then at that time, the person who made the motion can talk about and say what it is they want to do.
Okay.
The staff won't prepare anything.
Thank you. Thanks. Good. Pretty good. Any further business? Thank you. Further business, Mariner?
We've got two minutes to go.
Well, there's not any more. Please, there are...